Call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission July 6th to order at 7:03. All eyes.
The public opinion is to defy the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little call. Felkey here. Henderson here. Shaw?
Here.
Grand absent rumble, here. Patterson?
Here.
Okay, did everybody look over the agenda? I don't need a motion to approve unless anyone else has anything to add.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Section?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries. And the meeting minutes of June... We approved my carries?
It is July 6th.
It is July 6th, totally correct. That's weird, right on the same day as the 6th and... Wait a minute, okay. Approval of the meeting minutes for June 6th, we will need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 6th, 2022.
Support.
All you in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Any public comment to this point? Since we actually have the public, they're not going to say anything. All right, so we are on S A L U amendment of 2301, due to Main Street.
Do you agree with my explanation? You want to amend this S A L U?
Okay.
So we have to set a public hearing for that.
Okay. Well, do we want to go over tonight what's going on? You can say it real briefly. Do you want to give us just a few words for us?
Few words may be tough, but let's pass out some background information. Having been on planning and both zoning boards in the past, this is a bit of an interesting one. Kind of a tough nut because there was not a real process to change S A Lu's. Becky, I think, has done a great job trying to find out how to go about it. Just real briefly, the packet's got some pictures in there just to give you some context. This building was built in 1884 and for 138 years there's been stuff in the way on the eastern side of the sidewalk, Fulton Street sidewalk, adjacent to the building. Went through a fairly rigorous process between 2013 and 2015 to get approval to do things on the side of the building, do site plan, do the S A Lu, do put in the packet to the building inspector, did a bunch of stuff. Again, one thing that I would say is we went through S A Lu simply because a hall is not in the list of approved uses. The Lions Hall is the same thing we have, but it's a nonprofit. So they're able to do whatever they want in there without going through a process. Our process cost us a thousand bucks to get what we got out of it. Just a couple of things that I think are important. In 2013, we had filed with the county an agreement for access and use of the public driveway. And it talked about the ramp and a couple of other things in there. There was... There were not a lot of stipulations put in, there wasn't an end date. The end date effectively was when we took all three of the different changes that we had and they're out. And it conveyed to our successors the ability to keep that stuff there. When we did the S A Lu, and I understand that that sets conditions in some cases based upon unique uses, the thing that got put in there was, and the other one question is, is an ADA compliant ramp. We could put a ramp in there, but it needed to be removable and made out of wood. I would tell you that the real issue is the removability. I simply said I was going to, and I worked with Ben on it, I said, "I'm not going to put a concrete ramp in there and then be forced to take it back out. It's expensive. I could have put a wood ramp in, I could have put a metal ramp in. I don't think it would have mattered. I just specified which is the cheapest if I'm going to have to take it out." Come the tornado last year, the tornado damaged the building, the brickwork along the west-facing facade. To fix the brickwork, I had to take the wood ramp out. So it clearly was removable because it all came out. Now I have the steps that are back that were under the ramp, pre-existing steps, that is not sufficient for an ADA entryway. I need to put an ADA entryway back in there. So obviously I want to put another ramp. I would much prefer to do it out of something more permanent, not wood, and probably concrete. So really what we're requesting here is that the S A Lu be changed to strike out the one sentence that says removable wood ramp. Everything else makes inherently good sense to me and puts it in. It aligns the two documents, the S A Lu document with the agreement document that was signed by Sherri Cooper, the village council president. So it puts all that stuff in alignment. Again, the agreement document does not say it has to be removed, does not specify a material, so...
The agreement document does say it has to be removed.
Take a lo... I'm pretty... In fact, I didn't bring those with me. It has to be...
Removal of the improvements, so there is a part that says...
Yeah, it's in the... If you look in termination, and termination is when all three of those components are pulled out. So, in fact, you've got a situation now where one's out, the other one was never put in, but the third one, the window abutments, remain. And I don't intend to take those out, I got windows downstairs. So, the point being again that I would like to have something a little bit more permanent than a wood ramp. It's just more conducive to an ADA rampway. In fact, the wood ramp that was there still met the conditions of the S A Lu, but it was overly big because I'm using timbers rather than small piping for handrails and a more efficient rampway, which would be concrete. I have to do some concrete work there anyway on some of the other pieces that are existing. I'd like to do it, put a ramp in when I do this. So that really is the question, that's what I'm asking for, is just to strike that one sentence out. Go ahead, please.
But the attorney and the planner have also suggested that when we amended to, if we agreed to allow, if the planning commissioner agrees to allow him to make it concrete, that we also put a sentence, he has to get the approval of the council for the concrete ramp, since it will still be going on over property, even though he has their permission to put a ramp there and that one doesn't specify the material. They went based on what the S A L U did say. So they did recommend that you put, strike the one condition, but put the other condition in, that council approve the ramp made out of concrete.
I would just simply say that in principle, I don't have a problem going before council to do it. I obviously would abstain. Somebody's got to fix whatever concrete is there. If a concrete ramp goes in, I got to fix it. If the concrete sidewalk remains there, the village has got to fix it. It's got to be, whatever is there got to be in good condition and maintenance. And so it would just become my responsibility to maintain that and I'm not ever assigned something that says I will maintain. In fact, we did with the wood ramp, so that's what my question.
Out of the drawings, is there like a height and length permission now with the ramp?
I didn't put it on there. I do have a document that I gave to the building inspector. I've got to dig it out of some old files, I didn't have a chance today. What you see in there is a red line drawing, which kind of replicated what I had given to the building inspector before, so I will dig that back up.
I can try and find it.
Yeah. It was about a 12-foot ramp because it's one inch per foot that gets up to the top of that set of steps that you see in the previous picture.
Right. Over run. And did the wood one have rails on it?
Yeah, yeah.
Will the concrete one have rails on it?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the other thing that... But I like it with, you know, that they would, it would be constructed with concrete with blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Because concrete is on a core building, but, excuse me, so...
Yeah, no, I see no issue there. I would, like I say, I will... If you got the old drawing, I will revise it because I did a lot of...
I might have it.
Yeah.
Interesting question.
Like I say, I've got it on an old disk, I got to pull it up. I did pretty extensive research on what ADA compliance was, and there's a lot of nits and grits to it, but I got to have so wide, so deep of a platform that I got to have a rise and run for the incline. The thing that I had to do, which was an additional pain to me, was because the sidewalk is not mellowed, I had to come up with a threshold that took the unevenness of the sidewalk and transitioned it smoothly to the ramp. Put that wood ramp up that you see, and there was a lot harvested, I think, much easier to me to just pour concrete and be done with it because it'll mellow itself. So again, that's really all I want to do, is more permanent ramp out of the construction material that whatever I put it in, I think is best, is probably concrete. But it would be, clearly it would be compliant with the ramp.
So we have to vote to set this in?
Set a public hearing first.
No, we have three weeks, will we have enough time for you?
Yeah, I only need 15 days. Yes, we lose 15 days. And I have a whole list of addresses and stuff from the previous S A L U, so I don't have to generate all that. Most of the work's done, is to generate the predate the letters and get it some done.
So if we have a motion and set a public hearing, we will have enough time to do it on the August 1st meeting? That's...
That's like a scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Who's in August?
August 1st.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing for we the peoples' concrete ramp on August 1st at 7:00 PM at the monthly village and county meeting.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we will set the meeting for, what, 7?
To 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock is good.
Because I can hear, you can start at anything after 7 o'clock.
After 7:00 and then close it when you're ready. Okay, so we set it for 7:00, August 1st.
All right, thank you everybody. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the zoning ordinance review. Anybody want to go over?
I want to question on the beekeeping discussion. On the beekeeping, are we addressing it tonight or...
Oh, I did forgot that.
Yeah, we saved that on there. How about if we save that one for reports? And we'll do that right after the ordinance. So we are going over four, five, six, and seven.
I was going to say, I printed mine and left them on my desk and I'm going to leave them on my phone. I got it.
4, 5, and 6, are they all we have?
I just sent them 7 and 8.
Okay. All right, so four, did everybody get a chance to go over what was sent back? Want to go over anything on four? Yes. I'm waiting on you.
And I guess it's something that we'll have to really kind of see when I send this back and say, please make it print ready. After they went through and did section 6, all of these sections here on the right-hand side of the table changed.
Right.
Several of them did, so we want to make sure that they reference the right ones. I noticed on the very first page of the table, so page 42, that they left farms, greenhouses, nurseries, produce stands, farm markets, and garden centers in. And I thought we had discussed that there wasn't enough room for any of those. Okay, and then for whatever reason, I noticed under residential uses, there was a part that said adult foster care under residential uses, and that's gone too, and I don't recall picking that out either according to my notes.
You're talking about the very first page of Article 4?
Yeah.
Where it says residential uses, these uses primarily involve housing of various types?
We did, we had notation that it was supposed to be mentioned, that those were removed. There's three of them that should have been in there.
All right, well, I still have them to go on, so I'll bring that back to room. And then the only other changes I have on four are the section numbers at the end. So, which, again, I guess the best thing to do is see it, point it out to her that they need to be done, and see if she does it when it's print ready, if they do that all on their own. That's all me on four. Anybody else?
I have on 4/7 that, maybe I have an old copy, I'm not really sure.
Go ahead.
The manufacture of assembly of automobiles, manufacture, processing, production, outdoor storage, equipment. But those were all going to be out.
Show me where you're at.
At 7/4, if you can.
Second to the bottom, pardon?
The third one from the bottom, fourth one, the fifth from the bottom. And then in light industrial, we're going to take out artificial, manufacture for artificial flowers.
Okay.
Is that gone from her?
I was just saying, I'm looking at email version and it's different than yours.
This is the newest, it is all different. It does have that missing. I did go through and look at those things.
I am non-stapled, I may have mixed my pages up.
I had to date mine, or I did the same thing.
Yeah, it's sometimes confusing when you go ahead.
It is. Well, and you can't tell just by looking at which is the one that you just printed and...
They're just going to control, they don't want to date on it. It's not that hard.
Color code them or something, right? Take this one to blue, one decimal.
Well, because they all say from planner.
And even if you're doing like an email search and I bring up everything from Becky, which is what I'll do when I'm going to go through my data, it still gets like...
Which one was that?
Yeah, we need dates.
Yeah, the revision dates, like this is the date of this revision, this is the date of the one that did that. That would be helpful.
Just as long as they've removed it before it was printed. Okay, anything else in four? Article 5, dimensional standards.
I did not understand any of these comments that you have in there.
Well, because one of the things that...
Possible switch to A, B, C?
Well, okay, that was a Ben thing, okay, to take R1 and split it up to allow for R1A, R1B, and R1C. R1C would be our current R1, but R1A and R1B would be for, you could have different requirements for different site plots. Their point was well taken, I don't think we have enough to add enough value to change all of that, to divide all that up anymore. So, I shouldn't say anymore, there really isn't enough diversity. He doesn't think, and I kind of agree with him, to go through, coming up with those stand, what the standard would be for three different, you know, you're one square mile, not 36 square miles.
Unless we, you know, we could always change it at a different, if we annexed.
Correct, correct, correct. Correct, and he's, the planner said that before. If you annex and take on more, that's, you know, another time to change some things. But I kind of agree with him on that point. And the other point was, and this is, this again was a Ben time, the minimum area in residential multiple. Ben had suggested 22.5 from the 4200, and the planner thinks that that's very excessive.
I think the only issue we had with this board was that some of the math didn't quite...
Right, didn't part.
But as far as the numbers themselves.
It was, except that was one of the things that had been pointed out. So I don't have, I didn't, I didn't understand the 22.5 myself. I put it through because that was what I was asked to do before, so... I understand the planner's point of keeping it closer to what you have. Your R multiples are townhouses or small apartment buildings, you don't need that big of a...
I don't see a reason for switching that, but did we talk to him about how the the math doesn't quite add up on some of these?
On what math?
Let's see. And industrial, the yard or setback standards fee. No, it wasn't that it didn't add up, it was that we didn't think, we thought it was too big.
So they did, and minimum side yards setback, they changed to 10, for a total of 20.
That's what it was. It wasn't that it didn't add up, it was that we thought it was too much.
Right, so they did change those.
They did change those, okay. All right. What else we got in five?
They added in the driveway entranceway, we asked for.
In the meeting that I, the meeting I wasn't here when I came back from Florida, and I don't remember specifically, but there was a discussion about that not being what we asked for, and I don't, I thought that was what we asked for.
Well, the first time I didn't, I didn't think they added it. There wasn't anything. We asked for them to recommend write something and I didn't see.
Okay, okay.
So this is it?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Nope, that's all. Yes, no, that's what we asked for the whole clearance.
So isn't this 22.5, just, aren't you supposed to just minimum, with the minimum depth, don't you just multiply those and then that's your minimum area?
I think that's what we're talking about with the lot, if you look at the perimeter and you did the area, some of the areas didn't actually match up with what the perimeter was going to lead you to lots.
I thought there was something about that.
And I can't remember the specifics of it, but there were, some of the setbacks.
1050 is 22. That's where the 22.5 came from.
And maybe you were not writing, maybe it's fine, but I remember that, I remember what you're talking about.
Yeah, because 70 by 120 is 8400.
So let me point that out to them and ask them that.
So then maybe we don't meet 150 and 150.
Right, math doesn't work.
The math does.
That's where that math came out, okay. Nope, you're right, it does not, that math doesn't work.
So it's not that we need 22, 500, it's, we just need the math to work, so make those...
Because if there has to be minimum that wide, minimum that deep. Right, okay.
Oh, I forgot you, did they get, oh, the numbers changed?
They have, and that's what, then, that's also, in both of them, they have been going through. So I'm going to ask them for the next meeting to address the few things we pointed out, but make them print ready.
Yes.
So that we can, we're not looking through cross-outs and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else in five? You said we have six ready. Anybody with six?
Bee, animal shelter, do we discuss the bees? I also have something on, I know we're tabling it for next meeting, but I did make a call to the...
No, we're doing a report, that's fine.
Oh, okay, got it. It just occurred to me that animal use could...
Which bee? Which one?
It just, the first one says animal and agriculture, kennels and animal shelters, I'm like, oh.
Interesting, okay, so this one, accessory apartments, B 3, they changed the size of the apartment, the apartment from 450 to 600?
We said 450 was too small, what paper you're on?
Okay, 63.
That was one of my notes that we said that that was kind of small.
Okay.
That must be a different page, yeah?
Yeah, bizarre.
Okay, it is 6, it's 64 in the new one, that's okay. No, that was one of my notes, but if you guys don't want it to go up to...
Well, 450 is sort of small. I weren't, we asked them to rewrite and clarify this just because it was confusing, we couldn't figure out what it was, and I still went round on it, I finally figured it out, but... If you could have a...
This one's, the one I was looking at says each, are you under residential uses, section 201, 6.201 accessory apartments? Mine says each accessory apartment shall have a minimum of 600 square feet. Okay, I thought you said you said 450.
It's changed, yeah. Well, because I kept trying to make it add up, like if you have 1500 square feet and only 25% of it can be apartments, then that's not 600 feet, but that's not what they're saying. You could have a 3000 square foot house, 1500, but it has to be for you, so you have 1500 for apartments, so you would have two apartments. Right?
Right.
Okay, we finally got there.
And home occupations, there's a grammar error in B. The third line, it says related to, put to, when they pressed off H E, it should say to the home occupation.
Under...
B, parking and loading.
On line 3?
Yep, related to home occupation, it should say to the home occupation.
Home occupation shall be limited to, am I looking right, please?
6.204.
Home occupation should be limited to the parking or storage of one commercial vehicle on the premises, not exceeding a three-quarter ton capacity, provided the vehicle is directly related to home occupation. Should say to the home occupation. Or I think to the home occupation sounds better.
Oh, I was going to say, they both work for me.
So the C about number one, home occupation shall not generate more than 20 customers or client visits per week, and no more than two at a time. And my question before was why are we limiting the number of customers?
What section, I see?
C, home occupation, C.
Oh, so not generate more than 20 customers. Somebody said something about, well, we don't want traffic. Well, what if they, what if they're walking in, what if they, why are we... If traffic is what we're worried about, then we should say that rather than limit their customers.
20 customers a week as well.
Yeah.
And then, well, we had added, we wanted to...
They discussed that when you were going to, because I've already got those notes in here.
They added a number, we added a number 3, but I don't see it. The home occupation shall not be disruptive to neighborhood through noise, traffic, or other means. I think that was...
It's actually, it said number 8, any, so prohibited uses, 8, any use disruptive to neighborhood.
I see that, but that's not the same thing to me.
So you want a stipulation under permitted home occupation?
Well, it was a way to address traffic, if they're worried about traffic for the number of customers they had a day, then home occupation shall not be disruptive to neighborhood through noise, traffic, or other means.
Okay, I see that.
That was just a, maybe it doesn't work, but that was my idea, or our idea, I thought that we were trying to do it that way, get rid of those numbers.
I get what you're saying, disruptive is a little bit subjective of a term. That's why, probably why they have like the specific number of points.
Say, shall not be disruptive to...
Neighborhood through noise, traffic, or... Neighborhood through noise, traffic, or other means, I mean, or, you know. I mean, maybe it doesn't work, but I just think that it's.
Well, I think. Brian's back to work, noise.
He's suffering the wording in.
Or what, noise, traffic, or?
Other means. I mean, maybe instead of, I guess.
Yeah, so we'll see what he says.
Yeah, I think that's why the, the spirit of that 20 appointments a week or whatever is to just say that without having to be like, well, what do you consider disruptive? You know, like what is disruptive with it? I think, I agree with you though, putting a number of, let's four, on a business week of five days, that's four appointments a day. To get to 20 a week, that's not, if you, especially if like I tutor, for instance, I don't, but if I did over the summer, I might want to take six appointments a day. That's 30 minutes.
Oh, that's cool. Well, maybe take eight or one day and, I mean.
Yeah, I might, I might not even know that 20 appointments was a thing.
Can they, can they have 20 customers and not be disruptive? I think probably they can.
Yeah.
They have 25 and not be disruptive?
I get this, I get the sentiment of it though, which is you don't want somebody running through.
Right, me, I don't either.
Put the parking lot next to your house.
Have you got a little done it?
Sure.
All righty, anything else?
You're up to 6.206.
You're up to 206. Okay, anybody got anything before that?
And 6.5.
You're at, what is it, Ken?
6.501.
Oh, 501. Well, wait a minute, Becky's moving before that.
6.206.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
I need to turn it off.
No, it's. Okay, under D, pedestrian circulation. Uh, last sentence, public sidewalk shall be provided along collector roads and streets with a minimum width of six feet or matching existent, existing adjacent sidewalk, whichever is greater. So Ben argued if there's a four-foot sidewalk, you can't put a six-foot sidewalk next to it. Make somebody put a six-foot sidewalk, making it the width it's supposed to be. I argued McComb Township did just that by tapering the sidewalk. So if there was a four-foot here and a six-foot here, this started out narrow and went here. So that the replacement was, that was the gist of what that was supposed to mean. Not that if they were abiding a four-foot sidewalk, they only had to put a four-foot wide sidewalk in there. I don't know how to say that. I don't know if you guys care that much. You're okay if they take out a four-foot sidewalk. They can put four-foot back in.
We get into that ADA stuff too, because as, as a municipal, we have a responsibility to maintain six-foot sidewalks whenever possible, don't we?
Technically, I think it's five, but rest of our ordinance does say six-foot clearance. Six-foot sidewalk clearance, everything else we have, our sidewalk fail policy, or everything else that's six-foot clear.
Just a minimal five feet though.
I don't know how to phrase it, but it is possible for it to be done. Obviously, if contractors in McComb Township can do it, contractors in the village are made it to do it. I just don't know if you guys really want to go there, if you want to just say that they can, this is the easy way. I mean, if you're abiding four-foot, put a four-foot in, but.
Yeah, but then you wind up with a whole bunch of four-foot sidewalks.
Correct.
Which are anyone.
Yeah.
Correct, right.
You want to mitigate your liability as a municipality, putting in not ADA, okay sidewalks anywhere just because that was 50, 60, 100 years ago.
And I truly don't know how that would work. Most things, when you repair or replace, you have to do what's current, not.
Right.
So I, I, I don't know myself, but I think it's possible.
Yeah.
And if you look into why the spacing is like it is, it's, if you look at the way the modern chairs with, and we're not talking about your average walker with a dog or something, we're talking about those chairs that have to do a full 360 turn. They need quite a bit of space. I'm sure Ross figured out on that ramp landing. Um, so I get why you would want to keep it five foot or six foot minimum.
I also understand it would look super stupid to put a six-foot wide sidewalk.
And we're a smaller place. We're not McComb Township either. We're very small, so it would look ridiculous to you.
Up Main Street, you saw that?
Correct.
Going, I get both sides of that totally.
Totally.
Correct, so.
It's a tough one.
I can ask them if it can be, I, does that still keep us covered as long as they repair it with a four-foot? If it was a four-foot, or you know.
Well, then again, you're getting into repair or replace.
I would ask Brian what the liability is on maintaining the, you know, visual, I can't think of the word, but you know, that for, hey, we're gonna go with.
Aesthetic?
Yeah, maybe. That might be the right word. But we're gonna go with the aesthetic or whatever was there because, you know, we're limited for space and, and you can't expect to bump everything to six feet in a village of small size. We're only talking about one square mile here.
Right, I'll ask.
Yeah, I assume if that, if that, if we can be any additional liability by saying it's okay to put in four-foot fit sidewalks where it fits the, whatever is planned already there, whatever, if it aesthetically places, but beyond that, like if it goes with what was already there width-wise, if it applies.
It aligns with what's already there.
Yeah, if it's already, if it looks.
Again, I get it. You don't want to put a four-foot here and have four-foot there and put six-foot in between.
Agreed, that's.
I, I, I get that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I don't think we should say you can't do whatever matches what was currently there.
Well, we'll see, well, let's see what Brian says.
Yeah.
How that works, if that's still, if we're still compliant if we do it.
In the spirit of.
Yeah. I'm sure we just did all other sidewalks kind of the same way, so. 6.207, A, the very first sentence, blah, 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 located in, and, blah, 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 parks. If it's and, it's only park.
Park, right.
Yeah, I have my S removed.
I have mine removed. I have detached single-family dwellings that have manufactured houses located in approved and licensed manufactured housing. Park shall comply with the following standards.
My S on it.
Huh, it has to do with the printing. I tell you what, the printing.
You know what though? It might be crossed off in the middle part of the S where I can't see it.
Ah, you've got your annotations printed is what it is.
So it could be.
Yeah. Your annotations are printed. The word version I'm looking at on my phone couldn't possibly have annotations.
I need to try to make sure of that.
I will. If, I'll, I'll try to pull it up and zoom it in.
It was happening to me a couple of times. You guys were talking about stuff where I'm like, that's not what mine looks like. Mine's already fixed, but we got there.
6.209, um, the duplexes. We had said that we were going to allow them on main streets or corner lots, they were permitted. I don't see that in it.
Still. That's the second time we've asked them to do that.
Yeah, and, no. The next time I'm gonna make it print ready, so I'm not trying to figure out all these.
Bumps from one side and knocks from the other.
You always have to throw it away and reprint. Just throw it away and reprint.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
But then I lose all my notes.
I tell you what, I work with a lot of, yeah, printing something and then the minute you print it, it's dated. One change online.
Anything on 6.3? Is anybody? Good tag?
Yeah, but, um, we have a five. Um, 6.501, noise and odors, G, noise and odors. The last sentence, and it could have just been me scribbling more late. I crossed off masonry construction where it says shall be.
I did too, yeah.
And they still, so, um.
What was that?
6.501, G.
G, it last line.
Last line.
We asked them to come up with a different word, something that allowed more options.
Right, some type of sound, insulated material with screaming.
Not just masonry. What other options?
And also on B in that same section, I thought we had removed that last sentence.
Yes.
That's still there. Maybe we didn't actually do this one.
Um, I don't remember. Oh, I do, I do, but I don't.
Yeah, I got it. We crossed a little off originally either.
All right. I would have thought we would have wanted to specify a lot size. You don't want a 70-foot wide lot that's got two entrances on the main road. You're asking, you're asking for trouble.
This is true. All right, so put lot sizes on there so that Brian comes up with that.
Yeah.
I don't get you right. We have a ton of them in those that are not compliant, but at least make the ordinances right.
Right. It's the ones that are out there already.
The 6.503, we had, we went round and round because we went, we finally said it was vague and we need more input. And I'm seeing changes.
Um, I probably didn't tell them that it's vague, so give me some structure for vagueness, which, what more specific would you want?
I don't remember.
That's just it, we were all in a confused state trying to figure out what it was saying. And we wanted them to help us specify a little bit more of what we're looking for.
Fair enough, that's for Brian. Tell me you're done?
I'm looking for my next question.
Wait, did anybody else say?
Anybody?
No, I agree, didn't find the grammatics to be okay, but then again, I'm not, I'm looking for mostly grammatic errors, not like content errors, like I think those are best at the table with the help of Becky.
Only because I take all the phone calls, I'm gonna explain them all.
I usually don't try to attack the content on my own.
Sammy, you have anything else in place? Yeah, it's all ahead.
We do not have seven back yet. Everybody good with the review?
I'm on it.
Okay.
Actually, okay, we don't have seven. I was gonna say, I didn't have seven in the email yet. Thought maybe I missed it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so then we move into reports. I hear there are a couple of things that we said about bees.
I just wanted to say that I did talk to my insurance agent who's had three back. For the line, he said there's never insured any issues and that sort of thing, really.
So can I just like request for somebody to do it or anything?
No.
Okay, okay.
I talked to the planner at the city of Sterling Heights, and he said they treat it as an animal, as an animal use. So they need eight acres.
Yes.
And said, oh, you know, effectively that's, there's not many of those in the city of Sterling Heights anymore. So they don't really, they don't say you can't, and that's kind of their way of.
That's a really fair way to handle it. I talked to my insurance company, Dudek Insurance, um, the insurance agent I've worked with for 10 years, so I know her pretty well. And she said actually most homeowners insurance policies specifically exclude beekeeping. So this might be a moot point for anybody within the village who has a homeowners insurance policy. They specifically exclude it. So anybody who calls asking, you can say, hey, um, this might not be up to us. You might want to check with your homeowners insurance policy. You don't want to void your homeowners insurance policy, and then it's not up to us at all.
Yeah, that's a great.
Everyone that I spoke, everyone that I had spoken to had also said the same thing, that acreage is the most important thing.
Right.
And a less than an acre lot is not a place.
Well, so that takes us back to, now I know we eliminated other things that required riding stables. We deleted it because we have required five riding stables. So we can look at it the same way, that our current ordinance, if it's not specifically addressed, prohibits it. Or because it's a popular thing, do we want to mention it? But if we've taken everything else out that we can't have in the village anyways, do we want to muddy it up anymore? Time to think about it. Truly, it doesn't sound like it fits the village.
It doesn't. From everything that I've, I've gathered and all the information, I actually went out to several beekeeping places. We've done, yes, I did. And acreage seems to be the most important thing. Besides just keeping it away from the people, you want to keep bees away from each other. You want to keep away from the areas that are, you know, kids running around and playing, animals running around and playing. There are many different aspects that can set these things into a swarm. If you're not home, you know, you're in the village, you're working and this happens, not one. You know, when you're out on a farm, those bees have other places to go to and calm down or, you know, do whatever they need to. Right here in the village, what are they gonna do? They're gonna go to another populated area.
Right.
I did look at the city of Detroit's website because they have a lot of urban gardens and farming and such, but I could not get anyone to call me that.
There's no policing of any rules that they have down there, so they very, all those local organizations who are doing good for the community may be sidestepping some boundaries that are in place because there's not really, you know, the manpower to police somebody's. It's not a problem until it's a problem. You know what I mean? Like, it won't come up until somebody's injured, then it'll come up and you'll find out it's illegal. But even if you have eight acres of property, your homeowners insurance, unless you have like a policy that is for farming or something, you're not covered to have bees, no matter how much you have. But it, setting eight acres would keep us safe in the village because nobody has eight acres in the village. I think we have eight acres in the village.
Mine's one of the biggest and I have just under eight.
Over here, back here is where I'm, you know, with my teeth, there's like a, they've got a horse, some that, I know somebody's got a horse in the village back there. I don't know if there are some properties in the village that, nobody's got any acres.
I thought that was 16 acres back there.
Crops.
Yeah.
Yeah. Back at the end at the.
Where he wanted to do it all again. Well, and that's, that's enough room to keep bees safely, to be honest.
Right, but that's about the only, because over on Prospect, they don't have, I don't think they even have the five acres that are required for riding stable. Yeah, I don't know that there's anybody besides that section, the crops. And, well, what's, what's in the figure? Fritz, where do I put the condos? That, I'd have to look how much that.
I don't think that's five acres.
I don't, I don't think so either, but I'd have to look to see. So, yeah, rarely the village doesn't, unless we start annexing in. But then if things get annexed in, then we can address some changes.
Right, so I don't remember offhand, the, does the DNR have requirements? Because the planner said that if you don't have any requirements.
Didn't have requirements. They have guidelines.
Guidelines, so would those apply to us then, or?
Well, basically, our, our zoning ordinance, because it does not specifically address beekeeping, it is a prohibited activity, I hope.
So they go on then.
Right. If, if truly, if the thought is that we want acreage or we would like to recommend a large lot size, and there aren't any, then yes, I would say.
I mean, I'd call your homeowners insurance to find out. That would stop those people that.
Whoever called me, call them and say, hey, this is a point you want to think about.
Yeah, that, that would deter me from fighting any local municipality on it because your homeowners insurance is, you have to have that.
Okay, anybody got anything else for tonight?
So what's the next step with bees? Are we done? Our conclusion is that it's probably not a good fit for us?
If it's not included in our book, it is prohibited, so there's no reason for a vote.
But just a conclusion?
A discussion. Are we done discussing? Have we not gonna do some more research?
Right, so our, our conclusion, after looking at it for a couple of months, is it's probably not a good fit for us because we don't have enough properties here that, um, our research indicated that we needed, that acreage was the key ingredient based on everybody talking to everything, insurance and all that.
Insurance is another.
It's not a good fit for our community, so.
Well, safety is a primary concern because of how densely populated we are in one square mile. There's just doesn't leave room for bees.
So that's what you can tell council, that that's the reason why, okay, so, so, because we did think about it. We did.
Right.
So several meetings. Yeah, talked about that, we just, we determined that there were a couple of reasons why it's not a good fit for our community.
Well, I think everybody did a great job into research on this too, because I mean, it was something we didn't know about.
Um, so, insurance purposes.
That homeowners doesn't cover bees and that.
Plain size.
The size of the property and the amount of clearance that the bees would have, we can't provide that.
Well, you said minimum of eight acres is that what you.
Well, many communities said eight acres was, we only have one or two of those spaces here, so we're just. We're gonna leave it out.
We definitely did our due diligence in a good spirit, trying to, trying to make it happen for somebody who wanted it. I, I like the idea of it, but yeah, you can, that's interesting that somebody got a bee colony as a gift.
Yeah, I thought of that too.
As a horse and a ham farm.
But he got a beekeeping kit, I think, and what comes with it.
How long is that gonna last, until they, can they change it or not?
Maybe we should just give him six weeks' it and see if it's still a problem, yes, who knows, I don't know how to keep bees alive, and it's probably a learning curve.
We used to transport them in post-ops, when they, they come...
They'd mail?
Some people mail bees. They mailed chicks too, actually, and they'll survive a few hours.
They mailed chicks, yeah. That we used to get chicks and the bees.
Uh-huh.
We had the bees flying around the...
Do we wanna do more reading, or we're just going to review the print-ready? Seven and eight in the print-ready, 4.56.
Yeah, let's just vary about what we got coming in.
How come, um, workspaces didn't come in?
Um, cause I, um, have been trying to reach, um, Mr. Mouse.
So it's still in?
It's still, oh, yeah, absolutely. But I wonder, maybe there was some other reading, well, we turned it on.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
Ask it to the parks, well, I don't really have, let me go see it.
Yeah, this is the Wednesday, I was like, oh, how come they're saying you should park it? Cause it's Wednesday.
So like, they're...
Hi, go ahead. You better go.
I know.
Well, then with a vote, we can all run to the park.
Six minutes till ice cream?
Yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn at 7:55, 54?
54.
Oh, go with favor.
Aye.
There we go.